I now call to order the regular meeting of the Belvedere Planning Commission. The first item on the agenda is open forum. Open forum is an opportunity for any citizen to briefly address the planning commission on any matter that does not appear on the agenda. Comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Matters that appear to warrant commission consideration may be agendized for further discussion at a later meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak during the open forum? Rebecca, is there anybody on Zoom?
There's no one on Zoom with their hand raised.
Thank you. Next, we'll go on to reports. Are there any commissioners who would like to provide a report? Seeing none, does staff have a report?
I don't have a report tonight, but I would just like to remind everybody that we have our city attorney Jim Ross here, who is on Zoom.
Thank you. Item three is consent calendar items. The consent calendar consists of items considered to be non-controversial. Unless any item is specifically removed by a member of the commission staff or public, the consent calendar will be adopted by one motion. Items removed will be considered in the sequence that they appear on the agenda. Would any member of the planning commission like to remove any consent calendar item? Would any member of the public like to remove a consent calendar item? Rebecca, are there any requests on Zoom to remove a consent calendar item?
I see no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Then. May I have a motion to adopt the items listed on the consent calendar?
I move to adopt the consent calendar.
I will second.
Let's vote.
All in favor?
All in favor, thank you.
Hi.
The consent calendar is adopted. Okay, we're moving on to the public hearing now. If any of the commissioners have had any ex parte contacts, please disclose those contacts on the record when it's your turn to speak on any item. I will now open the public hearing on item two, design review application for a viewing platform at Artist's View. Can we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, commission members. I'm Tony Boyd, I'm the Public Works Director. And I will give you an outline of the proposed Artist's View viewing platform. And then hand over to Wayne Stacy, who is a member of the Parks, Open Spaces and Lanes Committee. And he's here tonight to walk through the elements of the design. In February 2025, the Chair of the Parks, Open Spaces and Lanes Committee presented the committee's recommendation to City Council on priorities for Belvedere's Parks, Open Spaces and Lanes for 2025. The top priority for the year was to develop an ADA compliant viewing platform at Artist's View. The report noted that there is a historic opportunity. As next year, 2026, will mark the 50th anniversary of the Artist's View parcel being deeded to the city. A safety opportunity, as the scenic views offered by Artist's View can only be seen from the street with no shoulder or sidewalks for pedestrians to safely stop. And a funding opportunity, as the city has been allocated a grant by the state to be used on projects meeting certain requirements. And Artist's View would meet those requirements. To quote from the report, "Our specific, clear, strategic, actionable recommendation is that the city should begin the process of development of an ADA compliant viewing platform at the top of Artist's View for completion no later than mid-2026. In a use case consistent with the deeded preservation of the natural scenic beauty of Artist's View and consistent with the terms of the state grant, that also enhances the safety and accessibility of Artist's View for our community." Since the time of that report, members of the Parks, Open Spaces and Lanes Committee and staff have engaged with neighbors and worked with the landscape architect to put together a plan for the Artist's View platform. At their June 12, 2025 meeting, the committee approved the plan and recommended that it be moved to the Planning Commission for design review. This evening, to date, the city has received public comment from nine residents, of which four were in opposition to the project and five were in support. Reasons for opposition included concerns that the city is not allowed to construct a viewing platform at this location due to deed restrictions. That the city is not analyzing all the environmental impacts of the platform as required by CEQA. Increased fire risk, increased noise, loss of parking, increased maintenance needs. That it is a waste of funding. And concerned that the public view sites in the city are a potential hazard due to added traffic and parked cars. Reasons for the support for the project included that it would encourage a deeper connection with the landscape by providing a designated spot to pause and reflect on the view. That the design is simple, elegant, and a good use of public funds. That it would enhance the public's enjoyment of this space. That it is stroller friendly and a safe place for children. That it is ADA compliant. That it uses grant funding. And that it offers a place for residents in the flats to enjoy the scenic views. On that note, I will hand over to Wayne Stacy, our committee member who is here this evening. And I'll be coordinating with Wayne for his PowerPoint presentation.
If you'll bear with me, I'll just get the screen up. Yeah, sorry, I'm trying to move it because the Zoom things are in the way. There you go. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you, both of you. So when you look at this, we went through the community, we looked at what Artist's View had been. We've heard its proposals on it, looked at all of the comments to try to design something and work through something that would fit within the community, fit within what the objections were before and fit with what the goals would be. So the final version comes out, Tony, if we can see the first. We went through for next slide. Went through several different versions and you can see it's a small platform. When you do the square footage, it turns out to be the same size as a parking spot in San Francisco. So, you know, pretty limited in size that kind of serves a couple of important goals. One, it limits the number of people that can be there at any time, addresses noise complaints. How long, what people can do, it's not a picnic spot, it's a viewing spot. If you look at the shape and the angles around that, it's designed to bring your view down. If you looked at the next slide, it is aimed away from houses and down through Angel Island across Raccoon Strait. So what you would see is the classic view. So again, kind of looking at taking care of the neighbors and actually focusing on what the view should be. So I'm going to show you the individual portions of this so you don't have to squint. So if we can go to the next slide. So this is what the deck itself would look like. And it does a couple of things, if you see with the two red arrows. First, handicap accessible. And that means accessible to strollers, walkers, wheelchairs. And that requires the removal of a little piece of that curb there, which right now that curb is what 14 inches wide or so? Not even a sidewalk. So now if you want to enjoy the viewing, you're standing there, you know, as long as you have big feet, you can stand there against that rail and lean against it, is about all you can do to enjoy it. But you take that out, you can see the half dome handicap covering that would be there. So it's about four foot wide there. And it was moved down to this end to kind of respond to one of the neighbors that wanted maximum street width right there. And so the position of this is to minimize any danger to anybody coming by if there are parked cars. Turns out it loses about one parking spot. A little less than one parking spot, but one. The other piece of it, and I'll show you why this is important in a minute, see that the back arrow? That's modern railing. And so that's going to meet modern code. The piece of this, and we talked to people. When you're looking at ADA accessibility, what we also found is people with young kids didn't have a place to do anything. And so this is a place where families can stop, see, enjoy the view in a safe way. And I'll show you why that matters here in a minute. So from the top, you can see the general size of it. You're looking at 10 and a half feet in depth, 16 feet in width. Again, parking spot size. So again, very, very small for this, really to focus on the viewing. Then the next. So this is something that I wanted to show that came up is the alternative. And some of the objections said, well, we don't need this, we've got plenty of great views right here, and this is your viewing platform. So I wanted to point out a couple of things. I assume you all know this area fairly well. And I don't think anybody's going to let their five-year-old play on that bench. The backing is around 12 inches high. You talk to some families that have young kids around there, they generally hold them tight because the first step off, you know how far that is. It's not good. So not a family-friendly to begin with. Not to mention it's a parking spot right there. The other thing about this that I kind of chuckled at when people said this is a great view. Well, if you sit here, your back is to Raccoon Strait and you get to face the rocks if you're lucky. And on many days, you get to face the car in the parking spot. And that was that picture in that day. But you can also see it's not accessible in any way, not handicap accessible, not stroller accessible. So we really don't have a place on the islands for any of this type of viewing. For anybody that doesn't already have a house with one of those views. So that is the design, and that's how the Planning Committee came to that. Parks and Rec came to that decision. Questions?
Go ahead. Thank you, thank you very much. I think this, I think this looks great. I do have a couple of questions. Tony, could you bring up the slide that shows sort of looking down on the platform?
Yeah, let's just get back to it.
Great. So are
that one?
Yeah, or the next one. Are those benches that are built into the platform?
Yes, we have the designer here.
Oh, great, thank you. Thank you.
So, yes.
Great.
Sorry, the people on Zoom can't hear you.
The benches would be ADA compliant and with a sloping back.
Great, thanks. And there's no proposal to put tables or anything like that there?
It really doesn't fit. We looked at that option, but at this point, there's not enough space really to circulate with a wheelchair and have any extra furniture in there.
Great. So this would encourage people, you know, as they're walking around the island to stop, look at the view, sit down, take a breather, and then keep walking.
That's how it was designed.
That's the goal, okay.
Again, it's not a picnic spot, it's a rest and viewing spot.
Great. And can you, can you address how this is going to be supported underneath? I saw in the, I saw in the report that there's going to be concrete pilings, but is that? Is that it? And how far away from the retaining wall that's currently at the street, what the piling's going to be?
Slide two has that picture.
I'll go back to slide two. And I can just add, along with Christie, that the structural engineering work would need to happen before it's built. And that would really specify the exact number of footings or piers that are needed and where they should go. But the idea is that this is sort of cantilevered out from the street. And so it would minimize the amount of the number of posts or the amount of concrete underneath them. The concrete, you know, for footings would be needed below ground. So, you know, depending on what the soil engineer says, the depth of those footings is still to be determined.
Great. So there's no proposal to have any kind of room or storage or structure other than the concrete pilings?
No, not at all. And if you, if you go out to the site, it's not quite, it's not really clear in these pictures, but it's actually, it would actually be a very small gap underneath underneath the deck, between the deck and the top of that slope. So yeah, there wouldn't be any space for anything like that.
You can go to a slide where there's a section showing slope.
Yeah, that was what I was looking at, yeah.
And there isn't, because there's a utility box with a retaining wall there. So all TBD with engineering, but that's the concept that you're looking at.
Great, thank you.
Yes, I have. So you mentioned that it was requested to our designer to design an ADA viewing platform. I'd like to know how we came up to conclusion that an ADA viewing platform is a suitable option for this site. The site is narrow and long, it goes all the way to the beach. It offers a lot of land. Why, how we came to the conclusion that the design should be a viewing platform? ADA compliant viewing platform? Basically, where, how did we come up with our request for design?
What do you want that, or do you want me to take it?
I can let you take that and I can chime in.
So I think that was
interrupt for one second, sorry. If you could just get closer to the mic, someone on Zoom said they can't hear.
Perfect.
Thank you.
So the issue was what this property was for. It's Artist's View, so the whole point is the view. If you're going to build, one, legally you need to deal with ADA. And ethically, you need to deal with ADA. So it was built, it was designed for the view and for maximum community enjoyment. So that anybody here can use it, from families to people like me, to people in a wheelchair.
I would see as limiting the land to one little platform. The land has a lot to offer. It goes long all the way to beach. And we are just not taking advantage of what it has to offer.
So if you're suggesting that a larger project should be, should be put together. Be that something for the future, but that's, that's a funding issue that's not within the budget.
Not necessarily larger, like hiking might be, do nothing. I don't, I don't offer, I'm not designing, right? I'm just saying it taking advantage of what land is offering is not necessarily a bigger or a more expensive project.
But I can tell you, if you've been down that lot.
I have.
It's steep. And so there are a couple of things there. I mean, I think that if you go back, people looked at stairs before for fire issues, for different things there. There's more disruption with the neighbors. So part of it is to maximum enjoyment, minimum disruption. And we also have this grant that helps us pay for this. So there's no burden on the city funds.
And can you also explain how the the platform came about? How was it like incorporating the community and like, or not? Or how we came up with that? Was it a process? No, not the shape, or the basically request that we had to the designer?
So again, the request of the designer was based on community input about a better place to view, a place as you're walking around the island to rest, to just sit and enjoy, talk with friends, talk with neighbors. Especially by people that don't necessarily have a house facing Raccoon Strait or Angel Island. The view was the more, actually, the view was the request by the people that I talked to, that I heard it other members talked to. People weren't asking for hiking space down down to the water. So this seemed to, I think, best represent what the community request was.
And I can chime in as well that different ideas have been explored over the years. I believe in the early 2020s, there was discussion of a trail or a walking path that would go down to the beach. And it's, this idea is a scaled back proposal from that. For some of the reasons that Wayne mentioned is that it's less disruption while still enhancing the scenic views for people at that location.
If the platform is built, I mean, just looking, just looking at the drawings, it doesn't look to me like it would, it would preclude any kind of future steps down necessarily.
No, I mean, it's the platform 16 feet out of 52 or so, no, it's a small, it's a small sliver of that lot. It would preclude nothing.
Yeah. I mean, one of the things that you know, we live on an island, we're surrounded by water. But there's very little accessibility to the water. You know, if you don't live on the lagoon, you don't pay your, I think it's 200 and something dollars to keep a paddleboard at the BSS, you can't get onto the lagoon. You know, if you're not a member of the yacht club, you can't get on, you know, into the water there. There's the one set of stairs down and then the really muddy beach that we like to call Labrador Beach, for obvious reasons. But otherwise, there's very little accessibility. And I completely agree with you that it seems anathema to living on an island that there's not public access to views and water and, you know, sort of, you know, the beauty around us.
I think to dovetail on that just a little bit, the couple of questions I'm curious about are the approaches to the form as it meets the street. The condition where the platform meets the street feels like a relatively complex transition, both architecturally and in terms of construction. And then how we arrived at sort of the one, the one entry. Do we study anything that might have like a multi-entry? Like sort of more of a weave with the street?
So you want that?
That would be one approach. Because of the scale, trying to respect the neighborhood, keep it on the smaller side, because that seemed to be
I'm sorry to interrupt, can you just get a little closer to the mic? They can't hear you on Zoom, thank you.
So given the scale, it's a balance between, you know, the platform and the benches and the view. And so from my standpoint, and also the ADA, having an area where you can have a companion seat. And that requires good four feet of bench space occupied by that. So there were a lot of more subtle requirements that, you know, don't necessarily meet the eye. But I feel like we maximized our objective, which was to provide seating for people to do ADA and to also have safety from the street because, you know, there's a guardrail along there. And so I think it's also important to try to keep it safe, not have so much exposure to the street and the curb. So
Is that a designation for handicap next to the left of the entry? I'm just squinting at it. So that's a designated place for a wheelchair to reside and then a companion seat next to it.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there other questions?
I have a couple. Clearly, the, I'm sure it was debated and discarded, but no garbage can?
We did discuss that, Tony, do you want to talk about that?
Yep, so it has definitely been discussed. There are a few different factors. One is that there's going to be a new garbage can just around the corner pretty soon at Park Lane Steps that are being renovated right now. The other is that from a public works perspective, it's a little counterintuitive, but sometimes trash cans actually attract trash. And, you know, it's, when you think about it from, if you're sitting at a bench and you're eating a snack, you finish your snack, you look around, there's no trash can. You put your wrapper in your pocket typically and go on your way. If there is a trash can, then you use it. Or you might throw your wrapper towards the trash can and it might land on the side and fall down. You know, over time, it just, it's in practice, sometimes trash cans actually end up causing a bit of a trash problem. So from the city's perspective, it would be preferable to wait and see if there is, if there becomes a trash problem there before installing one.
Yeah, I just say that, well, that might be true with, you know, a lunch, it's not true with the dog poop bag. People don't apparently put them in their pockets and they come with them. I think everybody would rather they go in a receptacle than go into their front border.
Yeah, absolutely, point taken. And that's one of the reasons that the trash can is going in at Park Lane Steps, actually. And that will be on the street sign, it won't be up the stairs or anything, it'll be facing the street. So, yeah, that's, that's the main reason for that one.
And either the size of the platform or the desire not to have people linger is why there's no table or two on the platform?
I can take that. So we will look through several different designs, larger than this. One of them had a low table, that was actually brought up some objections that that might cause more picnicking, more time there, encourage more. You know, I think the fear is always teenagers having a party, which they're not going to have on the street. Not if they're smart, but that's, you know, that's not, not what we wanted to project. So that's why we made that decision. And when the scaled-down version, if you try to put a table in, it just doesn't work. You'd have, first of all, cramped, and then you probably have ADA problems. I did leave you with one thing, the rail on the front that faces the street. As far as I know, everybody that goes down on the right-hand side, if you're facing the water, you know, there's that gap. And that's where most people duck through. This doesn't impact the railing at all. So nothing is obstructed there at all.
I think I saw another question here in the wings.
So now I wanted to ask, switching to the design now. You mentioned the curve is directed to where the view should be. The view is what it is, why the view should be. The view is all around and you can see all around whatever it is. And when it is an open space, when it is just a deck and not an enclosed space with windows, you can turn around and see the view all around. The shape doesn't dictate that as much, I think. If you can explain that a bit, because the geometry of the shape is creating some negative space that is not desirable. And I mean, between, for example, the bench and the curve going, that triangle that has been created. So can you explain a little more why you think there is a view that should be? And also how you view that an open space with no roof and windows and walls require a certain shape to direct you to certain view? Thank you.
Sure. So Angel Island is across the straits. And it's got this beautiful view of the peak of Angel Island, and it's framed by the And it's got this beautiful view of the peak of Angel Island, and it's framed by the by the cedar, the Alast Cedar up to the left, that big cedar. And basically, as the committee, we, standing there, we all want to frame that view of Angel Island. It's beautiful. And of course, there is the skyline of the city. And you can look up the bay. So yes, you get, you take in the whole thing. But we're trying to direct it away from neighbors, the, the straight view. If you just look straight out, you would look more at residences, looking over residences. So we're trying to go toward the open space and focus it toward Angel Island because that really is just a beautiful view. And it is framed. So that, you know, that was just something that, as we all stood there, it seemed unanimous. Feeling to direct it in that direction and not toward neighbors on either side or down below.
Could I ask a question about the, the access is one of the things that kind of keeps highlighting in my brain?
Yeah.
The, the single point of entry exit feels like a pretty strong move. My thought is if, you know, there are ever one question sort of preemptive to that is, is there topography that is of any consideration? Does it slope down towards that? Is it a funnel for waters or anything like geographically would be worth noting about the access to the platform, the location of it on the street? A little bit of a civil engineering thought process?
Well, you know, we did end up shifting it. It was in a different location. And at the request of one of the neighbors close by, they requested we move it over there where it is currently. So we worked with the neighbors quite a bit and we were trying to find the sweet spot where people were happy with the way it was laying out. So this was the consensus that people liked.
Thank you.
Yeah.
One more, one more question. I just wanted to ask about, about the, about the grant funding. This may be a question for, for Tony, sorry. Who is the grant from and what are the conditions of the grant, both timing and use?
So it's a, it's a state allocation grant called Proposition sixty-eight Parks Grant, I believe, that is available to municipalities to use for recreation purposes. The city has a maximum amount of funding that's available to it. And there is, there are certain restrictions on, on where it can be used and how it can be used. And there's a timeline for it to be used as well, which, if I'm not mistaken, is twenty twenty-seven.
Okay. So if this, if the, if the is, I'm sorry, if these funds are not used for the platform, they couldn't be used, for example, for tree, you know, tree trimming or cut, you know, it has to be used for recreation?
I mean, you know, it, it could be used for other things for sure. If, if they, if they're related to recreation, if, if the primary purpose is recreation, then, then that's what the funds are for. Yeah, so there, there was a question of lanes because that's another priority of, of the committee. But one of the restrictions of the grant is that the, the funding has to be used on a property with a parcel number. And lanes don't have.
Have a parcel number.
Correct, yeah. So yeah, so, so, you know, there, there've been a few different ideas that have been talked about. But this, this idea that, as I mentioned, had been explored in previous years was, was kind of put together with, with this grant funding opportunity. And that's kind of, and it fitted, we've, staff have met with people from the states who administered these funds. And they've said, you know, at this point, it looks, conceptually, it's, it's within their requirements.
Great. Thank you.
Can I ask two more questions about the findings? Were there, or will there be any trees removed? And then is there any lighting that would be considered under the design proposal?
I'm sorry, what's the second part?
Exterior lighting.
Thank you. Yeah, no, no, no exterior lighting and no trees there to be removed. There, there are two shrubs directly under where the platform is shown that would be removed. And those are non-native species that, that have been planted and haven't grown very tall at all. So yeah, quite small. There would be some pruning to the left of the, the platform. There are some shrubs over there that would need to be cut back to, to fit it in.
So would, if there's no lighting, would it be blocked off at night or any consideration for wandering in? Or I mean, I think this is maybe outside the scope of the, the designer view, but if it is, don't have to answer. If it's something we need to cover it on, then please let me know.
Well, it's a nice, easy one to answer because, yes, that's, that's definitely come up. I don't know if it's part of the design review, but you know, one of, it has been discussed as a concern and the, the proposal from, from the committee has been to put a sign up saying that it's only open between the hours of sunrise and sunset, which is the same as for all other parks in the city. That would require a change in the zoning ordinance. And that's something that the committee would like to recommend to city council. Thank you.
Is your mic on?
Not.
Okay, you might say it again.
Okay.
You might catch them.
I'm going to go back to, is there any member of the public present that would like to speak on this item? Seeing Rebecca, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak?
Yes, I have one person on Zoom.
Oh, let's, sorry. We'll back up.
Yep.
Excuse me. Okay.
Is that mic on? Sorry. I don't think it is. Can you push it, the button? Thank you.
My name is Claire McCalliff. I live at two two nine Beach Road in Belvedere, and I'm speaking up in favor of the project. I walk by the viewing platform on Beach Road near the stairs almost every day, sometimes twice a day. It is so well-used by so many people coming up Beach Road. And I think that this platform will also encourage more walking and more people coming to enjoy the view at the south end of our island. I understand that many of the neighbors now, most of the neighbors now are in favor of the project. And I would like to speak up in favor of it. I think it's the right thing for the city to do. I was not aware that the funding for the project is pretty much in place. And there's all kinds of ways for this committee, this council, to spend this public's money on maintenance for our lanes and so forth, but to have special funding for a project like this makes it even more of a good idea, in my opinion, and I hope you vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Barry Kuhn, and I live at two 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 Beach Road. I'm here because I'm very opposed to the artist's view being made into a platform. The two main reasons are, I, it's clear to me that many people in this committee that I'm speaking to don't know the history of why it became a platform. It's not going to be a lane. There are some deeds that are unclear or have not been determined to be allowing that lane to be built. So the Artist's View platform was sort of a throwing that in just hopefully to get something there, in my opinion. I did write a letter that apparently gave chuckles to the committee that said, I view it as an additional platform when we have something nearby. Every time I walk by, there isn't really parking at the other Winifred Allen stairs. I raise my kids around here, too. I brought them past there. If you're worried about people following through, why don't we reinforce that instead? So kids aren't going to climb over it. And my final thing that I want to talk about is because I live on Beach Road, I live down on the water. I witness what happens on the lanes quite a bit, especially the Harry B. Allen lane that you referred to, which, by the way, is in disrepair, has piles that are rusted through. There's a landslide down there and that needs to be repaired. But I watch, as you saw in my note, bonfires, litter, parties, trash, I already said the graffiti, all sorts of activity down there. I'm glad it's used. But in the evening sunset, it's used by mostly teenagers who are doing whatever they want to do. And that's fine. Other than the bonfires, that really bothers me. But I feel like we're adding just fuel to a possible fire by putting Artist's View right there where people are dropping cigarette butts, maybe they're throwing litter, there's no trash can. It's maintenance needs and it's just additional. I don't think that we need it. But I really, really want to focus that. I think there's a lot of history that people don't understand on this committee, especially about the deed. So that's what I would focus. And I think we're pushing this in a hurry where you don't have the information. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in, in the room would like to speak? Okay.
Hi, everyone. I'm Charlie. I'm the Chair of the Parks, Open Spaces and Lanes Committee. Thank you for your time and attention today. Thank you, Wayne, and, and the full team for presenting this. I want to just address like, where did this idea come from and things like that? And one of the things we did at the beginning of this year, when we were looking at our priorities, I think in the past, the Parks, Open Spaces, Lanes Committee, which meets four times a year to discuss ongoing stewardship of Belvedere's Parks, Open Spaces and Lanes, was I, I went back and looked at the general plan of Belvedere. And it had this vision statement, which I loved, which was preserving the special and unique sense of place while allowing changes that would enhance the community. And we tried to use that to hone in on what would be a singular project for the year that would represent that really well. And Tony alluded to some of those things, why we thought that this artist's view concept was a strategic opportunity largely because of the historic opportunity. We're about to hit the fifty-year mark of this being deeded to the city for scenic and hiking and view purposes. There's the funding opportunity. And then there's also the safety opportunity. And as we have been collaborating and engaging with neighbors and working on this design, the thing that came out to me is that safety, whether you're for or against it, safety is really important. And I think that's probably the resounding theme that I've heard. And this might be safety from increased, some, some folks have said there might be increased fire risk from people walking by or noise risk and things like that. And I just want to say the team that's been working on this has really been trying to engage with neighbors, meeting with them, they are showing them the spot, adjusting the design to address those concerns. But safety also is something that comes up on the people who are for the project. I spoke to a young mother who says, if I had to nurse, this would be a great place for me to stop and do, you know, a nursing break. And I think there is no, we also heard from people basically saying there is no safe way to enjoy some of the other places on Belvedere Island. So I wanted to share that we're really trying to think thoughtfully about stewardship of Belvedere's views. Jen, I think you said something about our city being defined, defined by water and views. And we view this as a opportunity to safely improve the the way that our community can take those in. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I actually ask him a question? My, yeah.
Jim, is that okay?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. Charlie, thank, thank you very much. I, I know that there, that there were other things that you know, had, had been on the Parks, the Parks Commission's I don't know, say docket, but like, you know, the, there was a bench that I know planned for Park Lane. There was some ideas about Centennial Park. Can you tell us a little bit about how this platform has, you know, has become sort of the, the top priority over, you know, other, other uses of, of the, of the, of the funds?
Well, the letter that I addressed to city council is a great succinct version of that. Just to quickly go through that, a lot of the other priorities, I was basically, they had already been achieved. The Park Lane bench funding has been secured for that. That was a priority on the Parks and Lanes Committee for a year or two. Ongoing lane maintenance continued to be the other priority for us. So we basically identified Artist's View, viewing platform and ongoing lane maintenance. That continues to be underway. Tony, we just had an update recently about what the funding looks like for that on a go-forward basis, which we can get into if you'd like. But this project has been referenced before, had funding secured externally to the city's funds. So that was another reason why it bubbled up as a strategic opportunity for us to live up to that vision statement of Belvedere for twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to comment who's here? With that, then I'll ask Rebecca if anyone on Zoom would like to speak.
Yes, I have Klaus on Zoom and Klaus, you should be able to talk now. You'll have to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, I'm Klaus Johansson, Carl and Irene Johansson's son. Respectfully, I listened to the presentation, but there's some basic information, basic critical things missing. The staff report mentions the nineteen seventy-six deed of gift as the beginning of the parcel's history, but that's simply not true. It does not mention the nineteen sixty-eight deed restriction against public access, without which the parcel would not even exist. You should have a copy of that. The planning commission has a duty to get an answer to this foundational question, which is, how did the city remove the nineteen sixty-eight deed restriction without which the parcel would not exist? The stack court also doesn't mention the fact that lot was first illegally split and then legalized by the city council or planning.
I'm sorry, Klaus, can I interrupt for a second? I'm sorry, it's, we're having a hard time hearing you. We can hear a word and then it sounds like you kind of go down from your microphone.
Oh.
If you could turn up your volume or we're, it's just a little bit hard to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So how did the city remove the nineteen sixty-eight deed restriction without which the parcel would not exist? The staff report also doesn't mention the fact that it was illegally split and then legalized by the city council. It doesn't mention why the parcel is called Artist's View instead of Artist's Open Space. It does not mention why the dedication plaque calls it a view site. And maybe that's all circumstantial. But staff report also doesn't mention that the parcel is currently under a pending public records request that is totally incomplete. And these simple facts cast a shadow of doubt that neighbors see as gaslighting by city officials that have been on the record saying they know nothing about any documents and, or saying that they were not important. And maybe the city is gambling that the, no one asked pertinent questions. But, you know, our February twenty twenty-five Public Records Act request is still unfulfilled. Right? So, you know, I mean, put yourself in the neighbor's shoes. Would you want your elderly parents or your neighbors or anyone else to be subjected to what appears to be gaslighting since twenty eighteen, seven years, right? And however, whatever the design is, you know, these questions are all red flags. Right? And the staff report is defective. You should reject it. And until, at least until all the documents are found and properly studied. So, you know, please answer the question finally, you know, how did the city remove the nineteen sixty-eight deed restrictions without which this parcel would not exist? Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca, is, is there any additional hands? Rebecca, are there any additional hands raised on Zoom?
I see no other hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. And I'll bring this matter back to the commission for discussion.
Can I actually ask a question to Planning Staff? My question is about the requirements for a viewing platform of this nature, I guess, compared to the traditional findings for other zoning in Belvedere. Is there, like, one thing I might look at is just, it's not clear what the height of the overall structure is, if that would be a requirement for us to approve based on the findings, based on the requirements of the building or accessory building?
Yes, we did look at the development standards for that specific zoning district, and it complies.
Thank you.
All right. The commission will now discuss this matter. Commissioner Watson, would you like to begin the discussion, please?
Sure, I'm happy to. Go over to my findings. So I think all of us, all of us living here in Belvedere are familiar with the site. You know, it's surrounded by large houses, many of which have, you know, have water access, some of which just have really amazing views. And, you know, I understand that there's a lot of history with the site. Mr. Johansson Meyer just referred to some of it. And, you know, Tony had referred to the fact that this has been, you know, a piece of property that's been sort of under discussion for a long time. I do think there's an opportunity now with grant money. And I do think, now caveat, I am a lawyer, I am not a land use lawyer, that the proposed viewing platform is sitting as lightly as possible on the land, if it is indeed sitting on the land with just a couple of concrete pillars. And I do think it will be used. You know, I think it's an opportunity for people to step out of the road, not get run over by the Amazon van, and enjoy the view. You know, I walk around, you know, I do the Belvedere Avenue Beach Avenue loop with my dogs quite a lot, and I know I would use it. You know, that being said, is that the absolute best thing we could do with this piece of property? I don't know. But that's not what we're, that's not what we're being asked to determine today. We're being asked to determine whether or not the proposed viewing platform meets the following findings. And in my opinion, it does. It does preserve the existing site conditions. It does have a relationship between the structures and the site. It does minimize the bulk and the mass. The materials and colors being used, it's just brown, basically, and fits with the wooded site. Fences and screening. To me, the fences are as minimal as possible while meeting the ADA requirements. Privacy, the viewing platform has been angled away from the residences it's next to. The parking and circulation, there will be a loss of one parking spot, which I know is very near and dear to all Belvederians. But it would actually remove people from, you know, from walking in harm's way in the road. There won't be any, there won't be any lighting. And in terms of landscape plans, there's really no landscape plans. So it would leave the property as natural as possible. So with all those things, I can make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Shinsky.
Yeah, and I just wanted point out what I hope is kind of obvious is that, you know, we're here to conduct design review on the project. There may in fact be questions that are out there now and have been and may extend into the future around, you know, deed restrictions and whether someone had standing to do this or that in the historical record. But that's not our task here tonight. We're not being coy. That's just simply not the lane we're in tonight. I guess, speaking within our task, I will be able to make the findings. But sort of like some of my colleagues, I think this is an undershoot a little bit. It's, I would, I think it's a little too modest. I know it's the product of compromise and trying to make it fit within the general modesty of the neighborhood. I tend to go the other direction. I too think Belvedere is a beautiful place. I love sharing it. I would, it doesn't bother me when people want to stop and stay where our views are in our public spots. I wish there are more of them. You know, there's 400 tradesmen who probably come in every day to work on all our properties. It doesn't bother me if they hang out in spaces and have lunch and if there were picnic tables. Nothing that bothers me in the slightest. So I wish there was more public spaces all around the island. I'm not sure about, you know, stairs leading down to the water at that particular site. You know, the Allen steps are, you know, generally, everybody does those once and says, yeah, okay, I've done that. So I'm not sure there is more to do on that particular property. But in my mind's eye, you know, I see a deck with maybe two platforms, you know, stepped down a little bit. That's where my mind goes. So, but within the realm of what we're asking about this particular project, I'll be able to make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Brutus.
Thank you for the proposal and a great project to, in the same context described by my fellow commissioners, be a small, modest, but valuable piece of the community of Belvedere. I too can make the findings. And I would be curious if there is room for further design on the access. I think I can make the findings without any changes, but it does feel like that access point is a little bit of a pinch point, to which I think there could be a slightly variation that would benefit the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Jemai.
I will not be able to make the findings because of the relation of the structure and the site. I feel that the the new building, although small, on the slope is not considering the land and the slope and the relation between the nature and the natural slope. And I think the land requires different building.
Thank you. So, first of all, I want to thank all the members of the community who've expressed an opinion on this. We've got quite a bit of feedback. And I want to assure each one of you who has expressed your opinion to us, we've all read your letters and listened carefully. I think the benefit of that is it gives us kind of a 360-degree view of the project. My own approach to this is, you know, probably somewhat informed by the fact that I am an architect and do quite a bit of land planning as well. And if you step back and you look at Belvedere, it's a paradox, perhaps, a beautiful paradox. We live in a lovely place, as we all know, developed over quite a long time period. We've got a lot of topography. The island is characterized by rather small, winding streets. I know every time I go up there that the streets are being used by pedestrians, bicycles, cars, trucks, which generally seem to navigate around each other fairly carefully. But it's a very constrained place, much more constrained than, you know, a typical subdivision or city layout. I do think this is a unique opportunity to provide a place for people to go and enjoy the view and step out of the traffic on the street. It is kind of hard to pause and then enjoy the view or move around parked vehicles. So I think that the Artist's View will be an asset to Belvedere. There's not much in the way of public space on the island, and this will be one small addition, I think, that can have quite a nice impact for both members of our community and people who choose to come and visit the community. And I have no trouble being hospitable to people who would like to come and enjoy Belvedere from the outside. Just because I'm kind of interested in these things, I did a little analysis of what kind of park space exists in cities in the United States. And I note that Belvedere is very, very low in terms of public open space compared to most cities, less than 1% of our land areas devoted to public parks. So for any of you who are interested, you might look up online. I mean, San Francisco's north of 25% in parks. So I think it behooves us actually to consider reasonable opportunities to add to public space in our city as we can. And this is one opportunity that probably isn't going to repeat in too many other places in the city. So I think Commissioner Watson did a good job of going through the compatibility with our guidelines. I won't reiterate that, but I will be able to make the findings in favor of the project. So with that, can I get a motion on the project?
I move that we adopt the resolution granting design review for a viewing platform, including guardrail and benches at Artist's View parcel.
Second, anybody?
Actually, Jim, I wanted to ask you a question.
Yes, good evening.
Hi, thanks. Because there's questions about the 1968 granting language, I just, I wanted to make it clear that our resolution, as Dawn reiterated earlier, is limited to the design review. And I think that the resolution does speak only to the design review, but I wanted to put into the record that it is, it's clear that this is just the design review being approved. Is that, do you think that's clear enough?
Yes, certainly. I think that's very clear.
Okay, good. Then I will, I will second your resolution. Thank you.
Can we have a vote?
Hi.
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 No, no.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Chair Sidle and Jim, I have someone on Zoom with their hand raised. I presume it's still about this item.
So would I need to reopen the public hearing?
I'm not sure. I mean, the motion's passed. I think it's up to you, Commissioner, or Chair Sidle, if you'd like to reopen the public hearing. Is that correct, Jim?
Yes, I'd agree. That would be at the chair's discretion. The item was open for public comment, was closed, brought back to the commission for discussion. But you could reopen to hear the additional comment. And then you'd have to decide whether or not you wanted to take any further action on the motion that was just voted on.
Just for clarification, is the same person who already spoke at the public comment time? It's not anybody new?
I feel like that speaker had the opportunity for their full three minutes plus a little additional. So at this time, I'm not going to reopen the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We will now move on to amendments to the city zoning ordinance, amending Chapter 19.79 regarding accessory and junior accessory dwelling units. Can we have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Sidle and members of the Planning Commission. The item before you tonight includes amendments to Chapter 19 in the municipal code for ADU and JADUs. These amendments are in response to updated state regulations to ensure that the city of Belvedere's municipal code complies with state requirements. As we all know or are familiar with, an ADU is a living unit that is either attached to a main residence or in a separate structure and has exterior access, a kitchen, and a bathroom. A JADU or junior accessory dwelling unit is smaller, located within a primary residence, contains minimal kitchen improvements, and need not include a separate bathroom. ADUs and JADUs provide increased opportunities for low-cost housing while maintaining a neighborhood's character. In response to California's housing shortage, the state of California adopted wide-range legislation in 2017 and 2018, broadly requiring municipalities to allow ADUs and restricting local control. Additionally, California legislation effective January 2020, '21, and '23 further restricted local control over ADUs and JADUs. More recently, California legislation, which was effective January 2025, further restricted local flexibility over ADUs and JADUs. The 2025 state laws limits local review of ADU and JADU applications when compared to most other development applications. Notably, most applications that comply with state requirements and a local municipal code shall be granted or denied only upon a staff-level ministerial review for compliance. Public hearings and design review are specifically prohibited by state law for ministerial approvals. The city's ADU and JADU ordinances must be updated to incorporate these recent revisions to state law. The new state laws mandate revisions to city ordinances that impact the following building and zoning standards. They are detailed in your staff report, so I'll just sort of list them out. There's increased height limits, two categories of ADUs, multifamily ADUs can have up to eight detached ADUs. There's a reduction or no front yard setback requirement. And there's the amnesty period for unpermitted ADUs and JADUs was extended. After further review of the ordinance that you received in your packet, staff has made a few more changes, which you have the updated changes on the dais for you, and they are also available on the back counter if anybody would like to see them. Some are clerical and two are sort of more substantive. The first was that we added that the maximum height for a detached ADU can be up to 25 feet if the slope at the footprint of the structure is 30%. And that matches our R15 zoning. And so we figured, you know, the lagoon, they're on the flats. And so R15 and Corinthian is where we might see something of that nature. And then the second change is that we just clarified that parking is only required when you're asking for a conditional use permit or an exception to the standard state requirements. So with that, we are recommending that the Planning Commission recommend approval to the city council for these amendments. And I'm available for questions, should you have any.
Could I ask a question about height limits?
Sure.
With the 25-foot height limit, would it still require variance? With the 25-foot height limit, would it still require variance if it is obstructing like primary, primary views of another residence or ministerially approved regardless of context of? Is there context, I guess, to the, the height restrictions?
So it wouldn't require variance. If you're proposing something that is not compliant with ADU standards, you're required to have a conditional use permit or, and design review. The only time that views come into play with the City of Belvedere Municipal Code is when you're asking for an exception to total floor area. So to answer your question, no, a view wouldn't come into play. But there are factors to consider when we're looking at that 25-foot height limit, and that is the maximum, right? So it could come in at 20 feet if that extra five foot would impact someone's view. Should you have considered applicant?
Thank you.
So the staff would decide on the height limit when you get a proposal? It is, if it is going to be 25, if it is proposed 25 and you, if you don't find the 25. If you find a 25 blocking somebody's view, then you propose a lower height or?
No, it would be approved ministerially. But you have to remember that you only get that 25 feet if the slope is 30% at the footprint, right? So presumably, like the one we just saw at 333 Bella Vista, right? If you're on a slope, the whole thing's not going to be 25%. A port that downhill portion will be.
And then the parking ties into this as well, right? Basically, then they don't require to have a parking because it is not an exception. Is that right?
That is right. And that's how it's been, that's how it is now. It just wasn't, the first draft that you received, I don't think it was very clear. It made it seem like everything is required to have an additional parking space. And the state says, the state law says we can't require that.
No, but I mean, like if we add the 25 feet to be in a stead of, I don't know if it's 16, it was on the previous page. Instead of 16, if we raise it 20 to 25, basically we take away the option of asking for an additional parking.
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
Sorry, on the, on the new section 1979050, which is the required parking. Or this, I, I actually think it should be requested, not required. If you take a look at the second sentence, if an exception pursuant to section 19.79100 is required for proposed ADU, it's really requested. If you look over at 1979100, it's that an applicant may request exceptions to the requirements in this chapter.
Sure. Yes, that makes sense.
This is the lawyer coming out, sorry. And then I also have a question about the, and this is over in 19.79.080 on the JDUs.
Yes.
In the new J6, the internal doorway and then a common interior doorway shall be provided to connect to JDU to the, to the living area, the primary, single-family dwelling if the JDU does not include a separate bathroom. Does this preclude there from being a connecting door if the JDU does have its own bathroom?
Correct. This, yeah, this is taken from the state HCD ADU handbook.
Okay, I just think that's kind of awkward, but I mean.
Well, if they have their own bathroom, then they don't need an interior connection.
Right, but what about laundry? I mean, I, I'm just, I, I mean, if it's required by the state, it's required by the state. I'm just thinking, I mean, who am I to question California? Sorry.
And just for clarity, so the JDU is ministerially approved and that does not require a bathroom?
No, it, JDU is ministerially approved. If there's not an interior doorway, like if there's not a door connecting it to the house, right? Remember, it can only go in an existing house or a proposed house. So if there is nor, no door connecting it to the house, I mean, it's just a wall, then it's required to have its own bathroom, but not laundry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there are a, just a couple things. You know, I know, I mean, obviously a lot of the language that we're adding is just conforming to what the state says, whether it really applies to us or not. But that is, do we have anything that, a high-quality transit corridor that we'd ever have to contend with here? Or do we have any major transit stops by their definitions?
Tivron Boulevard is considered a high, is a transit corridor. We have a bus stop in front of the Hadley offices that has a bus. I, I think that Marin Transit, I just got an email from them, they're upping their bus schedule. I don't know if it's going to affect us, but I.
So the question would be the.
So some properties.
Interval between stops, right?
Yeah.
Kind of what make it qualify or not, okay?
So some properties do qualify.
And, and so walk me through the, I, I don't think I quite got it. I mean, obviously there's the distinction between, what is it? A traditional ADU versus a, what, a limited standard ADU? In, in our case, that seemed to be kind of term of art that we might use when, for instance, we couldn't, you know, we, we don't need to require, we can't require the 10-foot setback in front because they wouldn't be able to build a ADU otherwise. So what, you know, you get an application to the city where somebody wants to stick an ADU up to the front because they say we can't accommodate it. Is that only in the case where they're not doing a complete remodel and you can have them adjust their plan to meet that 10-foot? I, and what, in what cases would they have to demonstrate that they couldn't make the 10-foot setback?
I, I would assume if you have a large sort of rectangular lot, or no, if you have a lot that has a house developed on it, you know, that's already in the setback and the only place you can place an ADU is right in that front yard.
So in a sense, it would just be someone adding a, I assume it would be attached ADU because they wouldn't.
Right, or it could, you know, depend, I mean, depending on the lot and the size and what is existing on that lot.
Right.
Or like, that could be the only place where an ADU could be built.
Right, or like something under, some, under a garage, because we see that a lot. Right?
Under a garage?
No, no, but like, you know, like where the garage is right on the street and they put like a little.
They put it above, there's, right. We have one on one west shore that they just got approval for an ADU on top of their garage.
I mean, Dawn's on to something that I had questions about too. And, and it just made me, because I looked in the definition section for limited standard ADU. I mean, you have ADU defined. I just wondered if maybe that idea needed to be flushed out or bracketed a little more, perhaps in definitions or perhaps somewhere else.
Yeah, and Jim's here. I don't know if he wants to further comment on it.
Yes, good evening. I'm taking a look at the, the section that you're referencing right now. If I could, clarification on the, the area that you're talking about with the limited ADU.
It's in the staff report, and my understanding of it is that the limited standard ADUs are comparable or synonymous with what we have in our code. These are sort of all ministerially approvable ADUs, right? We just don't reference them. We don't call them that in our ordinance. There, we don't have, and some cities have put restrictions on, have gone further than what the state allows or differed from what the state allows. And those would be categorized as sort of traditional standards, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong. And those are the ones that would require a CUP, right, in design review. But these limited standards are synonymous in what a lot of sort of planners refer to as the 66323, right? That's the government code that says cities, you have to sort of just look at these at the time of building permit, which are, and that's my understanding that they're more of the, they are the ministerially approvable ADUs.
I guess the, the main thing is staff understands it because I guess they won't ever be coming to us anyway, right? So that gives me some comfort.
Thank you.
Because I was more looking at it like, what if I had to pass a judgment on one of these things? I wouldn't necessarily know how to do it.
No, you wouldn't see him.
Okay.
Actually, while, while we're sort of on the topic, Jim, I've got a question for you, which you may not be able to answer. The, the definition of multifamily in California is different from the rest of the country. The rest of the country, it's usually five living units or more which don't have someone, which don't have the owner living, living and living in the, on the property. And in California, it is two living, you know, units or more. I want to make it clear that by building an ADU or a JDU on a single parcel, that it doesn't somehow change the zoning or change the deemed zoning of that parcel to be multifamily. Such that, and not that we haven't seen this before, such that one can't say, oh, it's a duplex, therefore it's multifamily. Therefore, I'm going to put 24 units of housing on this parcel. It's all multifamily.
So.
It shouldn't change the zoning, but if you look at the definition.
The, the definition of the multifamily dwellings in the proposed ordinance is consistent with some of the state laws that have been adopted. As you well know, sometimes the legislature is not necessarily consistent with how they use terminology. But this is developed straight from the government code sections applying to these ADU standards.
Correct, I, I understand that. It currently says a building with two or more attached dwelling units located in a residential district. So if you have a, you know, a single-family home with an attached ADU or an attached JDU, and it's in a residential district, then under our definition, that becomes a multifamily dwelling. I just want to make it, make it clear that a single-family home with an attached JDU is not a multifamily dwelling under our code.
I, I believe, I, I, that is correct. If you think that there needs to be some clarification in the language, we can certainly consider that.
Because if you just look at the words, that's what it says.
Yep, my, you know, my interpretation, this would be, this would be the definition that applies in these, in this chapter. As opposed to changing any other parts of the code. Because again, this is directly brought in from the requirements of the various changes in the housing laws for the State of California.
I think it's also something we can further look at. Again, this is not, you know, the Planning Commission is making a recommendation to the city council. It's something that we can dive into and figure out before.
I mean, we might be able to do, might be able to do something like for purposes of this chapter. Would that help clarify it for you?
Does this relate to the use of the word primary, when primary unit versus a secondary unit or an accessory unit?
No, it's really, it really more, if you look over in 19.79.049, which is, which is multifamily dwellings, detached ADUs. This is where it makes it clear that for multifamily dwellings, then you can have a maximum of eight detached ADUs. And that's really the, the, the main difference in this chapter of where we're talking about multifamily dwellings versus single-family dwellings.
I guess my only thought in that is that, in the instance where it is a single-family dwelling and an accessory unit, that we would have the designation of primary in that context. But if it is truly a multifamily use, that there would not necessarily be a primary unit? Some way to maybe differentiate between the multifamily and the, the non-multifamily?
You mean, if you have a separate family living in your JDU? Sorry.
I think what Jenna's saying is clear, is that by this definition, if you have a primary dwelling unit and you put an attached ADU, then under this definition, it could be considered multifamily dwelling.
Right.
Because it's two living units, and that's what this says. So we will look into that and have an answer, which we don't have right now. It doesn't necessarily change the zoning, but then it could be considered a multifamily unit under this definition. And then does that single-family zone get the benefit of adding?
Eight, eight more.
You can only have as many as on your property. So you can't have eight if you only have two units, right? Maybe that's where the code fixes itself. Because I don't think you can have more ADUs than you have units on the property. So you would, under this scenario, you would get the primary, the ADU, plus two more ADUs if it is considered multifamily. But we will certainly.
Thank you.
That's covered in the last two lines of that particular subsection.
Which subjects and what section are you in?
Right, right. That's what Rebecca was just saying. It says, provide the number of ADUs does not exceed the number of existing units on the lot. So that means you could have two ADUs if you have a JDU in a, in a, in a primary.
But then the law also says you cannot, you can only have a single-family home, an attached ADU, a detached ADU and a JADU. So I think it fixes itself. So the max you can actually have on a single-family zone is the primary dwelling unit, an attached ADU, a detached ADU and a JDU. So that's four, right? So I don't think it would be considered multifamily. I think it would, you'd fall under that other law that says you cannot have, with limits, how, what you can have on your property.
One follow.
Envy you having to figure all this shit out.
I would just be curious if in 197920, in the definitions that has the M multifamily dwelling that has definitions, including but not limited to the duplexes, triplexes, apartments, condos, that is there, is there a more full list of that? That's an addenda or it's just leaving openings for other terminology to describe multifamily dwellings?
I think it's, I mean, to me, I read it as it's leaving it open. It's not limited to those types.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And then I only have one last thing. I swear, I really do. Over in 19.79.089, when it talks about the JDU. And this number four, the JDU shall be considered. And this number four, the JDU shall be considered legal only so long as the primary dwelling is occupied by the owner of record of the property. I know that here there's a lot of family trusts and other. I'll say, you know. Estate planning entities that are the record owners of the, of properties. So I'd like to. Just. Point out that that might be some area where we can clarify that, you know.
It's on our list of clarifications.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
Get this on. Question in nineteen point seven nine point oh, three, oh. Little more on the technical side. It's a fire sprinklers under BF. No, just F. So. A lot of the older houses on the island probably don't have fire sprinklers. They would be required to have fire sprinklers if they were built today, I believe. So I was trying to understand if this meant that. If your primary residence does not have sprinklers, then. The accessory unit won't be required to have sprinklers or would it be? That you won't trigger it. I see it won't be triggered for the primary residents, but. It would seem advisable to have it in the new construction.
My understanding of it is they are required for the ADU. You, by building that ADU, you're not triggering. The primary residence to be fire sprinkled.
That makes sense to me. And if that's what it says, I'm okay with it. I, I just, I couldn't quite. Read that. And then if I move on to nineteen point seven nine point zero, four, zero. Down under a four on height. It, it talks about. Height to the extent it's necessary to accommodate a roof pitch. Aligned with the primary dwelling unit. And to me aligned sounds like. Putting the ridge line at the same place. And I, I questioned whether that's what's really intended, maybe. Say that the, the roof pitch would be similar. To the existing residence in that you're, you're matching the angle, but you're not necessarily. Needing to match the same height. So. Consider switching. Align to the word similar.
Yeah. That language again is.
The end part of the state.
Directly from the code.
Okay. Well, then I'm, I'm with Jenna, who am I to critique the state of California? I think that's all I have.
Could I ask about the fire protection in that same section nineteen seventy nine, oh, four, oh? That the fire protection, building separation requirements, detached accessory dwelling. Unit shall maintain a minimum building separation distance. That is sufficient for fire and safety. Is there additional language around that distance if it's?
That's all dictated by the building code. So yes, there is more language, but it's all done through the, the building permit.
Sorry, I did have one. Very small comment. It's in design standards. Nineteen point seven nine dot zero, zero, zero. Number one for wall elements. The word stucco is, and I don't know, is this state wording or should it? No.
This is not state wording.
You can, stucco is more colloquial. I would just recommend using plaster. That's a more technical term for it. Those are all the comments I have. Any further comments?
Would you like it changed in number four too, where it says stucco and?
Yeah, I would use it.
Okay.
Everywhere. So. I don't know if the commission has any further comments or questions here for staff before I ask if. There's any public comment.
One more question about that height that has been more relaxed. Why do you think you should do that? To make it less stringent than what state offers?
Well, a couple of reasons. So our housing element, right? We're trying to achieve a lot of arena numbers through ADUs. Given our. The pattern of the. Past two previous conditional use permits. They were both for height. Very conditional use permits. And it would. Additionally, in, you know, the 10 years that I've been here, almost 10 years, we haven't seen a lot of ADUs come in with. Additional height. So we figured it was sort of a way to sort of. A maybe, you know, show the state that we are sort of encouraging these ADUs by being sort of more lenient than what, what the state allows. Secondly, you know. Given the circumstances of that type of ADU, we think. You know, that they can be managed well through. Through the process and we just don't have a lot of them. And, and there's so many properties here with a very large slope that, you know, where the, that, the, given. The proposal, they're not always a complete box of 25 feet tall. It's a portion of the height that exceeds. The 16 feet.
The, the reason I have, I am questioning it is the parking that we give away. When we added to the language of.
So we, we thought about that too, and this. The ones that have come in for these in excess height have all had parking. Right? I think if you're going to, you know, this is an assumption, right? It's not in the code, but. The, the applications that we've seen for excess height. It tends to be a larger ADU. They've. Both had parking. Yeah.
I have one question about the materials. I'm just hypothesizing and curious if there's. Any interest about incentivizing the use of more natural building materials or anything not purely related to the, the. The process of, of increasing the housing stock, but what is the housing stock we are increasing? I don't have anything in particular that I'm suggesting, but I would love to open up a conversation about. I don't know if it's incentives or what it is, but I feel like Belvidere has the capability to sort of lead by example. In a lot of cases, and if incentivizing that using. Some of the code is reasonable. I would be very curious about having a discussion about that.
I, I think it's, yeah, at your will to have that discussion. I don't, you know, if they tend to be more cost prohibitive, I, you know, I think we might. We would prefer to encourage more housing than a natural material, but I, you know, I'm not. So familiar with. Those types of materials, but if you have a suggestion, I'm all ears.
Yeah, I, I think it also depends on what the primary dwelling is made out of as well, you know, just to make sure that. You know, the, the ADU sort of. Goes with the neighborhood and goes with the. You know, primary dwelling.
I think there's a, like a, a land use, energy use component here too of like, at the end of the day, we definitely want to have. An ecosystem of Belvidere that functions really well. And I think this feels like a very necessary step, just on a foundational level, but. There's nothing that comes to mind to include in language now, but. Just putting it out there that I think this is an interesting opportunity to start talking about what it is that we want to incentivize, whether it's. Not necessarily exterior finished materials, but maybe different methods of, of. Energy generation or. Ways to, to bring in the new technology that should be amending our built environment.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion among the commissioners? Would any member of the public that's present care to speak? Is anybody? Uncharacteristic. Nothing to say. Okay. What about on Zoom? Hands raised?
I see no hands on Zoom.
Okay. So now I'll bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Jemai, would you like to start the discussion? About how you feel on this item?
Sure. I. The only concern that I had was that height that I felt. One of the main things that we are concerned in Belvidere is mass. And by. Mass and parking and this. And views, which. Is related to the mass as well. So I think this is kind of. Basically. A little restricting it would be. Give an opportunity to review more, consider more and find out if that is a. Good approach for a certain site or, or not, that, that is the, the only. Concern I had. And I, I felt, and you know, when we were, I, I was listening that. ADU on Bella Vista that went to appeal. And I felt the, the struggle that. The commissioner had as far as the, what is the height that is acceptable or not? And I think maybe this came from that. But I think one good measure would be the interior height. Instead of establishing an exterior height, establishing an interior height to say. A room not less than, I don't know, whatever we. Is going to be like generously, say, let's say nine feet for a affordable housing, nine feet is a generous height or. Like limiting it that way rather than from the exterior, because there are various sites that could be dealt differently. So that is the only concern I had and, and the. Fire sprinkler that you mentioned also, I felt that it is important for a new structure to get that fire sprinkler. Regardless of requiring for the existing one.
So the, the question is whether you feel like you'll be able to make a recommendation to forward this to the city council. That's, that's the, the motion that we'll be taking. So.
I'd like to hear other people's opinion here. Am I the only one feels that way or?
Fair enough. You can, you can wait.
Yeah.
Commissioner Shinsky?
Yeah, I get. My feelings aren't strong on this. Maybe I spent too much time working up in Sacramento to kind of. You know, I, I. You know, we all have to live in this world where we ascribe to this gentle fiction around ADUs and JDUs. And, you know, I think the impulse to. Since, since that's the case, the impulse to be. Compliant and over compliant with what the state of asking of us. I think there, to me, that's sort of the overriding consideration. There's a lot of performative aspect to this that I, you know, for better or worse, it's what we have to deal with. So I am not necessarily in favor of, of adding too many bells and whistles onto what. Is before us. I think Rebecca would, you know, part of it is that when. And, and I, you probably had to make this call based on how much of the current. You know. Chapter 19 or whatever we were going to hang on to versus how much of this paves over. But was, you know, in terms of my reading, I, I always like kind of a track changes version to show kind of what's different versus what's already there. And I know this is kind of like real extensive rewrite.
Typically we do that, but in this case we didn't because we just rewrote the whole ordinance. We changed everything. So it just, it didn't. We had, the earlier versions were, we tried to redline it and then we just scrapped it and said, let's just start over.
Yeah. And that's what I figured when I started to crosswalk things over. At the same time, I caught, you know, spotted a couple of things that looked outrageous. And of course they've been part of the ordinance forever. So. But, but I appreciate the, the amount of work you put in on this. I'll easily be able to make funny.
Okay, Commissioner Booters.
I echo my fellow commissioners and appreciate the. The desire for Belvidere to do a little more than required code. And. Would be interested to, I can make the findings for what I see before me. And I'm curious to have further conversations down the road about. What leading California's standards could look like for Belvidere as, as an example.
Commissioner Watson?
I just wanted to start by saying, you know, in my. Fairly brief time on this committee, I, I wanted to note that every single major renovation or rebuild that we've seen. Has involved at least an ADU, if not a JDU and an ADU. So, you know, I, I think it's an. An easy opportunity for. Our, our friends and neighbors to add square footage and add. You know, additional aspects there of their, of their, of their house. You know, while adding to our, you know, to our housing element. So I am in favor, like you Don, of not adding. Too many bells and whistles. Cause I feel like, I feel like our Belvidere building code is already, is already pretty, pretty robust. I do note that, you know, there's been some suggestions, you know, as to language changes and, you know, sort of. Minor tweaks and things like that made. By, by us tonight. And so I'm not sure whether. Assuming we, we vote to rec, you know. Recom- recommend the rewrite to. The city council, what the. You know, what the conditions would. Would be on that resolution, but I think. I think the rewrite looks great. Given our. Restrictions from our state overlords. So. Thank you.
I guess so. I'll go and I don't know what has to like go after me. I, I know a lot of work has gone into it and. Frankly, I think that. The way the laws are configured by the state might. The concept sounds simple. The actual realization of it is quite complicated and technical. And as we've seen, conditions vary and. There's almost no. One simple, one size fits all, even though. That's kind of what it wants to be. So. I've made a few minor comments tonight. I know there's. People involved in this here in the community that are. More knowledgeable, honestly, and, and deeply involved in it. So, you know, there's a couple of ways we can go. In the past I've seen, you know, kind of trying to condition some language. But personally, I'm okay with. Possibly just us having made our commentary here. I know there's going to be a little bit of ongoing work. This isn't. The final, final version. I think it's close. But. For myself, I'm, I'm fine recommending that this ordinance go forward to the city council. In the form, we saw it here with the caveats of our comments that they can take into account. So that's. That's where I am on it. Commissioner Jemai.
It seems that. Seems everybody thinks that 25 feet. Is acceptable to be added. So is that true?
So the, you know. When I sort of think about, so my. My lot is very steeply sloping. And so, you know, I, I think our discussion about, you know, what, what trumps. You know, to me, the, the whole ADU. You know, to me, the the whole ADU JDU conversation is sort of the, you know. There's a big beautiful tree, if an ADU is proposed to be built. Can the tree get cut down, you know, what trumps the tree or the ADU? You know, what trumps the, you know, the blocking someone's view or the ADU? It's. And I and I think it's it's a it's sort of the the struggle of, you know, the the ministerial. System system that we're that we're under, and I think that's that's sort of the heart of your of the of the of the height issue, you know. We care about height because it impacts your neighbors, it impacts their their views and their sense of privacy and, you know. Not necessarily sure that on a steeply sloping lot twenty five feet is gonna make a difference unless it does. You know, unless it does because of. You know, alignment and, you know, privacy and tree screening and all that, so. I think it's sort of part and parcel of the of the of the of the struggle of the ministerial nature of the ADUs.
Can I actually ask Rebecca, is this in part the result of seeing so many projects come through that would have benefited significantly from. A subtle variation in height that. You know, the the context of Belvidere's hillside and proposals you've seen over many, many years, that that is why it feels the most reasonable change?
Yes, I mean, and again, I haven't seen a lot of. AUD, ADUs asking for CUPs for. Height. Going beyond what the allowable height is, just of recent, you know, we had the one at eighty one Belvidere. And the one at three 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 Bella Vista, we do have an application for one that is way over twenty five feet, given the slope of the lot. I think it's really just, you know, it comes into sort of where the placement is on the lot and the topography of it and. That. Portion of it exceeding the eighteen feet, right, because these, you know, they are allowed or sixteen or eighteen, depending on where they're located. So it's a.
Is there any benefit to having language that does somehow signify something about that, that it's not necessarily. To to exclude someone using. Using that condition. Poorly as if to limit the possibility of a blanket twenty five foot cross lot. ADU or something along those lines. If there's.
If you can come up with the language, yeah, I mean, I think if you want to make changes, then we'd need the language. You know, thirty percent is pretty significant, right, that's a pretty steep slope. But that, you know, if you have language, then we can, again, it's, you know, this is not the final language of the code. It will go to council for their discussion as well.
Just to make sure I'm reading it right, that nineteen seventy nine oh four oh. A four is, so the height limit, is it that it would, do we stretch, like, is the code going to read the strike through? Where it says maximum height sixteen feet, eighteen feet, and instead it would say the maximum height of twenty five feet is allowed of, or excuse me, now. Kind of pull that back, I completely understand now that this is.
Yeah, there's no strikers.
No, I mean, I I think it's fine, just for the record of what I believe the, for the over thirty foot, thirty percent slope, the maximum height of twenty five feet.
And just, you know, as a part of clarification, Commissioner Jemai, we do, when we do take these ordinance amendments to the city council, we do incorporate, you know. What the commissioner's comments were, so that they, we're not relying on them to listen to the video, we actually summarize the comments. And put them in the report, so they know what commissioner said, if that gives you any reassurance.
Okay, in that case, I would say I would eliminate the twenty five feet and let it be as it was.
I'm sorry, Jim has his hand raised. Let's see what he has to say.
Yes, I wanted to address the chair's recommendation regarding a motion going forward, that the commission has two options. One is to, well, they have multiple options, but in terms of moving it forward. If you're fine with it going forward as drafted, but merely asking staff to consider the comments, then you could move it forward as drafted. If there is something that you do not want to be moved forward. Without it being a change being made. Then I would recommend that the motion include the change that is required in order for it to move forward.
Thank you, Jim, for that clarification, so. I think I need to talk to my fellow commissioners and ask them if they can move it forward to the council as drafted. Or they feel like they need to change to it, let me just start on the right side, Jim. I mean, Don, Mr. Shinsky, do you feel like we need to recommend specific wording here, or are you okay? Forwarding it as it's written with staff providing our comments as background?
Yeah, I mean, if we're getting down to specific wording, obviously, the. You know, Jenna's comment about the the ownership titling, I think is. Important that the height limit, while I agree in concept, absolutely, I don't think we should. I think that from to my mind, the twenty five feet is fine, so I'm happy to. Refer to the city council as is in my mind.
Jenna?
I mean. You closer than mine, please, thank you.
I mean, it sounds like Rebecca's gonna summarize our our comments and suggestions to the to the city council. You know, while I obviously think all of my comments are totally valid, I'm absolutely fine sending the, you know, recommending the draft. You know, with, I guess, consultation to our to our comments going to the city council.
Okay, thank you, Justin.
I I agree, I think I can. Would like to see it go through.
Yeah, the same here, I would say move forward as the drafted with staff reflecting our comments.
And I concur with the rest of my commissioners, so I think in that case, we're ready for a motion.
I move that we. What are we doing here exactly, we are recommending that the city council. There we are. Rec, we're recommending the city council adopt the draft zoning amendments regarding accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units.
You're actually adopting a resolution. To move.
Oh, I heard that we adopt the resolution of.
Recommending that the city council adopt the draft zoning ordinance, yeah, thank you.
Second. Let's vote, all in favor?
I, I.
Members of the commission, if I could say one thing, I want to thank Rebecca and the rest of the staff for all the work that they put in on this. It is a significant rewrite required by state law and. She did a great job in putting this together.
With some help.
Thank you, Rebecca.
With help, thank you.
I will now adjourn this meeting. And I agree, all your comments are.